We will have a pretty busy evening with thirteen consent items, five decision items, four reports, and thirteen vacancy announcements. And we will start with invocation from Tyler Roach, Minister of Youth and Family Life here at First Baptist Church in Morganton, which will be followed by pledge of allegiance. And if we could have the kids come in before the prayer. Will you stand, please? While they are coming, the pledge of allegiance will be presented by terrific kids, grade three through five at George Hildebrand Elementary. And Terry Penland is the principal there. Okay, start with the pledge.
May we pray. Creator of all that is, seen and unseen, we thank you for your presence with us. We thank you for the beauty of the mountainous surroundings and rains that quenched the Table Rock blaze. We ask now that your wisdom and guidance transcend our desires, and may the decisions of our leaders make Burke County an even better place to live and raise our families. May the wealthy be gracious and the poor be willing. May the older folks be patient and the younger folks eager to learn. May we all learn to love our neighbors as ourselves, and may these words that are so easy to speak be just as easy to act out. As we close this time of petition, may peace, forgiveness, and cooperation for the common good be our guide. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the Lord of the United States of America, and to the Father who which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every and most just.
Next on the agenda is approval of meeting minutes. We have three there. I do not see any reason why we can't vote on all three at the same time if there is no corrections or amendments.
Approve of the minutes.
Thank you, Jeff. All those in favor of approval of the many meeting minutes, raise your right hand. Five to zero, Madam Clerk. Next, number five, is approval of the agenda.
There's no additions, Mr. Chairman. A motion to approve the agenda is printed.
Thank you, Wayne. Those in favor, would you raise your right hand? Five to zero, Madam Clerk. Public hearing scheduled, we have none. Do we have any listed for informal public comments?
I do not have any cards, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. Item nine is consent agenda, and we'll recognize our county manager, Brian Steen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Gentlemen, your first item on the consent agenda is clerk acceptance of CDBG progress reports submitted by Western Piedmont Council of Government. Item two is clerk and tax office amendments to records and retention schedules. Item three, from the clerk, technical correction to planning board's alternate position. Item four, clerk reappointment to Burke County Planning Board. Item five, clerk reappointment to Burke County Board of Adjustment. Item six, county manager lease of office space for probation and parole. Item seven, fire marshal request for consent for Love Lady Volunteer Fire and Rescue Department Incorporated to enter into a financial agreement with the local government federal credit union. Item eight, general services request for approval of a temporary two-for-one price for mulch sale. Item nine, hospice proclamation declaring November is National Hospice and Palliative Care Month. Item ten is JCPC approval of JCPC 2013 slash 14 revised funding plan. Item eleven, tax office EMS collections report for September 2013. Item twelve, tax office release and refund report for September 2013. And the final item, thirteen, tax office tax collections report for September 2013.
Any comment or question about the consent agenda? Hearing none, the chair will entertain a motion.
I'll move.
Thank you, Wayne. All those in favor of passing the consent agenda, please raise your right hand. Five to zero, Madam Clerk. Items for decision, number one is FRAA funding request for installation of water lines, presented by Brent Brickley, the airport manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. The airport authority would like to request Burke County's assistance with the installation of water to our new tee hangers that were put up at the first of the year. The cost of the parts is $1,555.21. Caldwell County has agreed to provide the labor if Burke is able to assist with the parts. The tee hangers are, there are eight unit storage hangers for aircraft. They've actually increased our revenue by 10% on our hangers this year.
I notice you have that in plume. How many new tee hangers do we have?
You have one new tee hanger. It's got eight units in it.
Okay. Wayne, you had a...
Well, I just think, Mr. Chairman, too, I think Johnny asked for some information after the last meeting. I believe Brent got that information. I saw it come across my desk, so I think that information was put out there.
Any other question or comment? Brent, if I might have one just for the public, usually we share any costs with the four entities. That would be Lenore City, Morganton City, Caldwell County, and Burke County. And this request is using the two counties, Caldwell and Burke. Is there an explanation for that?
Yeah, the reason we're not using Morganton or Lenore is because Morganton provides us with lawyer services and Caldwell or Lenore with finance officer.
Okay. And the next question, I was going to surprise Carson and ask him. Carson, donating this material hinder our facility any way or shape or service?
No, sir, not at all.
Not at all? Okay, thank you. Any other question or comment? Hearing none, the chair will entertain a motion.
So I move, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Wayne. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Five to zero, Madam Clerk.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item two deals with approval of the local business plan, and that's on behalf of the Partners Behavioral Health Management. We have Paul Caldwell, Chief of Community Relations Officer, who is standing in for Brent.
Good evening. Thank you, Chairman Taylor. First, I want to thank the Board of Commissioners for all the support that you've provided over the years for the very vulnerable people we serve, and particularly Chairman Taylor, who is a very active board member with us. I see him once a month in meetings over in Hickory, and I know he does a lot more than those single monthly meetings. I'm here with a pretty straightforward request. I know that you had a previous presentation by Rhett Melton of the local business plan. This is a formal plan that the state used to require us to do, and then for a number of years, it was no longer required. You received a copy of this, I believe, in your meeting, pre-agenda meeting on November 5th, and Mr. Melton went over, I think, the plan with you. I'm here simply to answer any questions that you might have and request approval of this business plan. It was unanimously approved by the Partners Board of Directors of the eight counties that Partners serves. Six of them have met and approved the plan, and the one county that we have not yet presented to, other than Burke tonight, is Gaston County, and that meeting was delayed until the first week in December. So, simple request that you approve the local business plan as presented on November the 5th to you. Any questions that I can help?
Thank you, Paul. Question or comment from any board member? Paul, I might add that we've got a group of people that came together and almost did the impossible with, because they told you to do it, but they didn't give you a roadmap to do it, so...
It was a loose map, if there was one at all. You know, the first part of it, the state did mandate specific things. The last part, of course, are all local initiatives. Fortunately, you know, we refer to our senior management team at Partners as the first word in that is probably most descriptive of us. We've all been around way too many years, so we're able to figure this out.
If no question, the chair will entertain a motion. There's two items to that emotion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to adopt resolution number 2013-45, joint resolution of the boards of county commissioners of Burke, Catawba, Cleveland, Gaston, Iredell, Lincoln, Surrey, and Yadkin Counties, approving and adopting Partners Behavioral Health Management Local Business Plan for 2013-2016.
2016.
2013 to 2016.
Yes. Thank you, Johnny. All those in agreement, please raise your right hand. Five to zero, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Paul.
Thank you very much.
Next item from our county manager, request for qualifications for architectural and engineering services for EMS station number seven.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, I had issued a request for qualifications for architect and engineering services. As indicated in your packet, we had three respond, CBSA, Mosley, Stuart Cooper Newell. And doing analysis of the RFQ responses, it's my recommendation to the board that we move forward with Mosley Architecture. They are currently doing the 911 facility. One of the items that I did notice in their response, besides meeting the questions that were asked of them, were they are also planning to utilize a local firm here to assist them as they had for the 911 project here in Burke County. So again, this would be my recommendation that we move forward with Mosley Architecture for design work, and if the board has any questions, I'll be glad to try and answer them.
Thank you. Question or comment? Hearing none, the chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a two-part motion, please, sir. First part of the motion will be to authorize the county manager and/or the county attorney to negotiate a contract with the recommended firm of Mosley. And number two, the motion to authorize the county manager to execute the agreement on behalf of the board.
Thank you, Johnny. All those in agreement, please raise your right hand. Five to zero, Madam Clerk. Item number four, under decision, interlocal agreement between the county and cities regarding public safety communications services. This will be presented by our attorney, J.R. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before you, you have a proposed interlocal agreement between Burke County and the municipalities of Burke County who aren't already parties to the creation of a consolidated 911 system and a joint agency to run it. If you recall, back the end of 2011, you, the county entered into agreement with the other two provider of 911 services, the city of Morganton and the town of Valdez, to consolidate those services into a joint agency. That was done, and the grant was received, and building is underway. And to be ready for the anticipated opening of the consolidated system, we have prepared agreements for other municipalities to allow them to share in the 911 consolidated center. What they do in this agreement is they appoint the county through the Burke County Emergency Center as their provider of communication services, emergency communication services. The agreement is for a period of 10 years and has a notice provision of two years before a municipality can be free of the contract unless there is a dispute that cannot be solved internally over financing. And if that's the case, then a party may be able to get out of the contract on 60 days notice. The contract declares that the emergency center personnel and the director will be county employees. It provides that the county shall hold ownership of all the telecommunications equipment, building, land, relay towers. The county would be responsible for that infrastructure. The only thing that cities would be responsible for is the equipment that's utilized by their first responders or their volunteers. The municipality would agree to share the cost of operations of the center in proportion to the, that the city's population bears to the general county population. The advisory board for the center is called CTAB, and the agreement would guarantee each municipality that signs it, a member to serve on CTAB. There would be a non-voting member, and CTAB gives recommendations to the director of the communication center. We have standards of performance that the county agrees to meet, and we have provisions for internally solving complaints. If there is a complaint by a city, it would go first to CTAB and then to the director of the center, and with a final appeal to the county manager. And financial decisions would go to the CFC, which is the special finance committee set up under the joint agreement, and the CFC would then make their decision or refer it for appeal.
Mr. Chairman, I have Candy Strzynski here. She can discuss some of the performance measures that are in there and let folks know. This center is going to be night and day different than what we're talking about currently exists. And, I mean, this is something that's new, and it's very complex, it's state-of-the-art, and we need to have a formal relationship between ourselves and the users of the 911 services, and thus the reason for creating this document. And it's also in accordance with our original interlocal agreement with Morganton and Valdez, because that was something that they did want to include, to allow participations of the other municipalities in the operation of the center, as well as the financial support.
Chairman, Mr. Chairman, board members, thank you. To update you a little bit, we have really come a long way with the technology for the new center and signed with Entrado for our phone system. Now, this will allow us IP connection, which will set us up for being able to receive text to the 911 center when that opens up from all of the telcos. We'll have the capabilities of growth for the future and adding on additional stations when we need to. We're starting with seven, and we'll add up to 10 when we need to expand. So this is adding, this is allowing for an expansion into the future. We also have set up the Casidian as a geodiverse system. We'll set half of it in Valdez, and this will allow us, if there is a problem at this center location, we would be able to use that as a backup as needed. In addition, we would also have the mobile unit as a backup, which is on satellite, so very redundant paths. The telephone, the, sorry, the internet services will be redundant as well to the center, coming in in two different directions from both sides of the city, so that if there's any interruption on one side, the other would kick in. In order to try to troubleshoot anything before it would happen, of course, we wouldn't want to have any outages and haven't. Burke County is one of the few that has a plan in place with the 911 board. There's only 23 plans on file with the 911 board for a backup plan that's been approved. So we will continue that with the new center, having that plan in place. As far as the standards go, we are compiling with a user group standard operating procedures, which will allow us one way to do everything across the board for every entity in the county. That will standardize the training as well, certifications for the telecommunicators for, to meet sheriff's standards. They will hold certifications in emergency medical, fire dispatch, and EMS. Are there any questions?
Question or comment?
Mr. Chairman, please. For either one of you, Candy or J.R., either one, what mechanism are you going to use? And what's your timeline to approach all the municipalities to get the agreement signed?
I believe they're going to go out on Friday to the municipalities.
I'll be issuing a letter to each of the town managers and including copies of these documents to them, and also make them aware that we'd be glad to come and meet if they have a working group that has questions about the relationship that's covered in this document, so that anybody who has questions, we can try to answer those, as well as projections for budgetary cost. And we've got a few months so that they can look through this. I'd hope that they can review it and, you know, go ahead and approve it by sometime in March. That gives them a few months to take a look at it. We can't possibly go to each town's board meeting if they pretty much fall on the same day, but that's why I was saying we would avail ourselves, if they have a working group or their manager wants us to come out and visit with them, to go over, you know, this facility and its capability and its staffing is going to be like something we've never seen here before. And when I was in a meeting today with the Tourism Development Authority, I was telling them, you know, tourism is very important to us, but if somebody has an accident in the gorge and they can't get to us up by the old means, the new means, the next generation 911 system that we are going to employ in this new facility, gives them the ability to text their message for assistance rather than just be voice. And it's important for us to be able to get out, no matter how they communicate with us, to provide 911 services. So again, it gives us a great deal of flexibility. There's a lot of redundancy, and the employees that will be staffing it are going to be meeting these recommendations, not even established as a mandatory standard by the state 911 board. We will be ahead of the game, probably one of the very few counties in the entire state of North Carolina that will have this type of a service available to our citizens. And one thing I do want to make clear, the money to build the facility and to put the equipment in is coming from the state 911 board. The cost of operations, paying the light bill, paying salaries, is a county responsibility. So I know there has been some confusion, but the grant monies are paying for the building and for the equipment going into it, and we will have to pay for the staff to operate it.
Yeah, I think a very topical question that a lot of people would like to ask, so I'll try to ask it for them. Would this new system enhance and help the people over there fighting that fire in the gorge?
Well, anytime you have to bring in extra personnel from other agencies, you need to be able to talk, communicate, connect them all together. So being able to add them on to the Viper system, being able to open up our radios and everybody talking the same radio group, all of that is part of the big picture, being able to work with the other agencies. So yes, anytime you have other agencies come in, or anytime you have multiple agencies trying to fight the same crime, the same fire, the same, you know, you need to be able to talk to each other while you're on the scene. On the topic of the other municipalities, I know Drexel has already reached out and wanted to participate in the building of the standards and the procedures. So, you know, I know they're interested in doing that.
And, Mr. Chairman, one last thing. I did go ahead and sent out a letter to all town managers about a week ago, letting them know about this, and gave them a copy of the proposed document, so they've had some notice of this already.
Any other question or comment?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just for some clarity, in 4.01 JR, the city agrees to share the cost proportioned upon population. Can you give me a clearer definition of that? Is that based on percentage of population, of the entire population of the town? Does some would be paying more, some would be paying less? Is that what we're saying?
It'd be based on their population. The more people you have, the larger you would be paying. But what needs to be clarified is there is a base budget that's established, and this will be for anything above the base budget in order to provide these services. So it's probably not going to be a very large amount of money, but it does get them involved in the process. They have access to CTAB and involvement in CTAB. And, you know, you're trying to make sure that the cost is being allocated properly, because you don't want folks living in rural areas actually paying a bigger part of the bill for providing this when you have more calls in a more densely populated area, thereby using more of the 911 services. And this is what we're trying to address, and it is utilizing the population figures that are also used to establish how sales tax is distributed to the municipalities here in the county. So that's about as fair and as verifiable as you can get.
We're just doing ownership of the whole system, too. That's what we're trying to attain, aren't we?
Joint involvement.
Joint involvement, I'm sorry, would be better.
The 911 funds come to the county for the equipment and the equipment replacement, but the operational cost is where we're looking at joint involvement.
I don't want to belabor the issue, but one more thing under 802. Candy, what improvements would a city maybe ask for that we would implement and they'd have to pay for?
That would be MDTs, AVLs in their vehicles, those items. They would incur that cost.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other question?
I have a couple of them, Mr. Chairman. I guess Valdez and Morganton is already on board with some type of written agreement. Is that right?
Right. Yes, sir. They are the two PSAPs that are involved in this consolidation, and some of their funding is coming over to us to operate the facility.
Okay, second question. If I was living in, say, Hildebrand, why would I want to help pay for this? What benefit would I get if I paid for it, and what benefit would I get if I didn't?
If the town of Hildebrand is interested in starting a 911 services, I think they better start looking at about $3 to $4 million to get into that business. And the state of North Carolina is trying to consolidate all these PSAPs, and they are not going to fund anything else in Burke County besides the PSAP that we'll be operating.
All these towns, do they understand the consequences if they don't come on board with us?
Well, we will be discussing this matter with them as we present these documents to them.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other question or comment? Thank you, Sandy. Chair will entertain a motion.
Chairman, I move to approve the interlocal agreement between the county and cities regarding public safety communications services.
Thank you, Jeff. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Five to zero, Madam Clerk. Out of number five, over the mountain trail Caldwell County pathways incorporated grant match, and again, that'll be presented by Brian Steen, county manager, Crown Scott Carpenter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Scott is...
Scott is probably a little more knowledgeable with some of the technical aspects here, but Lenore, Caldwell County, and Morganton have already gone ahead and made their financial commitment to this project. And Scott, I'll let you explain a little bit more about it.
Okay, I'll do the best I can on this. This process has really been going on for about two years. There was a group meeting, and originally, I believe it was under the City of Lenore's umbrella, and they met for about a year, a year and a half. And at the time, this grant was aimed specifically at a Tiger grant, is my understanding, and the Tiger grant is a large federal grant that can fund a large project. And in this case, that project would be to bring the Over Mountain Victory National Historic Trail from Lenore all the way down into Morganton, where the Over Mountain Victory National Historic Trail headquarters is supposed to be. And if you recall, that headquarters is supposed to be along the Greenway, that's part of the City of Morganton's Parks and Recreation area. The grant that was received was actually received by Caldwell County Pathways Incorporated, which is a 501(c)(3), and they tend to manage almost all the grants for trail recreation in Caldwell County and in the City of Lenore. At least, that's my understanding. For a while, they didn't know if they were going to be able to get this Over Mountain Victory Trail grant money, because the federal government was holding up release of funds for a good while. And so the group had stopped meeting on a regular basis. It used to meet every month, and then it went to once every few months. But then Paul Carson, I spoke with him today, he actually was able to come up with the money, and he provided $30,000 for that grant. And then the four entities, Burke County, Caldwell County, the City of Lenore, and the City of Morganton, were each asked to put in $5,000 as a match to that grant. So this basic project is supposed to do preliminary engineering, is my understanding, and a feasibility study of laying that Over Mountain Victory Trail from Lenore to Catawba Meadows here. That sort of works out well, actually, in our planning efforts, because I've also asked Paul for $30,000 for a grant, if it ever comes about. He's not sure if it'll come about in the next year or so, that we can leverage against the FERC money with the release of the CRA. And if we can do that, then we will plan the rest of that Over Mountain Victory Trail from Lake James to this segment, giving Burke County a 35-mile segment of trail that's planned. Now, that doesn't say built, but of the whole trail, this trail's been going on for 35 years, and there's only 85 miles of designated pathways and trails right now, but we would by far have the largest segment of that trail if things come to pass. And that's essentially what I know about it. And I'm happy to answer any questions that I can.
Question or comment?
Mr. Chairman, please.
Yes.
Scott, you may be able to answer this, or you may not. I'm going back to his letter, and the purpose of the letter was talking about the $30,000 planning grant. Now, were we a part of asking for that grant money, Burke County?
My understanding is that, I don't know who was on the, Lee Anderson is here. Lee, you were on that meetings early on about two years ago. Who was representing Burke County on there? Do you remember?
Susan, I believe, came to the first couple meetings that had Susan Burke.
Well, Lee, did we agree to match $5,000, as you recall?
That application came after the Tiger grant. It fell through. I had left the process. Merlin.
Perry.
Yeah, Merlin Perry, I believe, was extra man coordinating that with the National Park Service. I know the council of governors, or my council of governors, have been heavily involved in the process. We had done some preliminary work with that, where I exited the process on preliminary alignments up the Highway 18 corridor. And so there's been some preliminary work done, but it's gone about as far as we can take it of the staff, of needing a little more engineering eyes on it, or if it could ever go to federal funding request, state Parks and Recreation Trust fund request. This would be a logical step. That's why Morganton participated in it. If it's going to happen, we need some preliminary planning that's got some basis to ask for more significant funding to see it happen.
Okay, Scott, in the abstract, if you would, if you'll embellish on this one statement. The abstract says it could have a significant economic impact for the region. Do you, can you maybe tell us how?
Well, I guess, like in the trail system, you know, our focus right now is on developing a loop trail around Lake James, but part of that is also to tying in other trails, like the Mountains to the Sea Trail. And we're going to be building at least six miles of the Over Mountain Victory Trail just from the release of the FERC money. So we believe it could be a tourist destination, especially if you can wind up with 35 miles there and 25 miles around the lake, and become a real big attraction for the bicycle community, which is pretty substantial. So I'd say for tourism and economic development, it could be.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anything you do to get bicycles off the highway, and the road will be a big attraction.
Well, now, Scott, on that question, if you, gentleman, would allow me, on that, around the Lake James, now, we were involved with that earlier, and I think that's already set, isn't it? It's supposed to be.
It is set in a document that there should be a trail around Lake James. How that trail works and happens and is funded, and what location it goes in, and who's going to build it and maintain it are all being discussed and worked on right now. It's a very complex project as you go 25 miles around the lake.
Well, I represented the board and attended ribbon cutting for that Victory Trail.
Oh, you're talking about the segment of it. There's only 3.5 miles in Burke County of Over Mountain Victory Trail.
Which comes down above Old 105, because we were both there that day, and I think it stops there, just at a road up there on 105, so I have to come down Old 105 to the lake.
It'll go from the section that we're looking at building soon will actually run from Patty's Creek at the state park, and it will go all the way around to the halfway around the dam section of Lake James, and then it will follow the Catawba River for at least three miles. And if we can get a few words changed in the CRA agreement, we might be able to go as far as nine miles on that trail. That's what we're shooting for on it.
Well, I think where Johnny's going, and I'm probably going, is that, you know, $5,000 ain't a whole lot of money, but if this was going to happen, why didn't we have it in time to do our budget? Because then it comes as a surprise, and we got to find money where to put it. So the question is, I guess to Paul, is where's the fund coming from?
Fund balance. Yep.
Well, what we're looking to do is to take existing appropriations in a non-departmental, undesignated portion of the budget, utilize those funds to pay for this grant.
Any other question or comment?
Well, Mr. Chairman, if I may comment, it looks like, if I'm listening to Lee and others that were here, that we've made some kind of verbal commitment. Is that correct, Wayne? Maybe you were.
I don't think we made a verbal commitment. It's just, it was in the agreement, more or less, when we settled the lake thing. But now, this trail coming, that we're talking about connecting, no, I don't think that was ever, I don't think this board has ever discussed this trail. But over the Mount Victory Trail, we always thought that was going to connect through the lake trail, which is up on, again, on 105.
Other comments or questions? Here none, the chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, a motion to approve the $5,000 grant managed for the Over Mountain Trail Grant Connection Project and authorize the county manager to execute any documentation related to this grant project.
And would you mind adding the money source?
$5,000, as Paul said.
Coming from.
Non-departmental. Non-departmental.
Okay. You've heard the motion. All those in agreement? Raise your right hand. Five to zero, Madam Clerk. Next on the agenda is item number under 11, and one is comments from boards and county staff. And I think Kay wanted to start tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Just wanted to make you aware that county offices will be closed on Thursday and Friday, November 28th and 29th, in observance of the Thanksgiving holiday. And the Morganton Christmas Parade will be held on Tuesday, December 3rd, which means our meeting is on Wednesday, December 4th.
Jack?
I have none, Mr. Chairman.
Jeff?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to take just a couple moments to make two commendations. On behalf of this board, I sit on the EMS Quality Committee, Quality Assurance Committee, and I just wanted to take a moment to publicly acknowledge the work of this committee. This committee brings together a whole plethora of interest in emergency management, from rescue, fire, hospital, medevac, on and on. And recently, we've had a couple really good things, I think, come out of the work of this committee. These guys and gals come and leave their feelings kind of at the door. They have open discussion. Dr. Hawkins and Greg Curry and others lead this organization, and have done a great job in picking those items that are, I think, really important to the citizens of Burke County, and one of which they kind of led the way in the dissemination of epinephrine to get that drug in places where it can be most effective for our citizens. And really, I think, is a model for maybe some of the rest of the state to consider how they're doing that. But I just wanted to take a moment to, and those folks aren't here tonight, but for the most part, but just acknowledge the work they're doing and to express appreciation on behalf of this board and the citizens of our county for what they are doing for our folks. Also, I sit on the DSS Board, and I want to also commend these folks for what they did during the federal government shutdown, whereas they could have done like many counties, sit back and said, this is not our problem, we've done all we can do. Our staff, Mr. Hernandez, and many others, I think, went way beyond maybe the call of duty. They looked for every thing they could find in this county through faith communities, clubs, organizations of every kind, to do everything they could possibly do to help the folks who are in need in our county. And they didn't have to do that, but they did it because they wanted to, and they really, I believe, have compassion for our folks. I want to say a note of appreciation for what they're doing.
Very good. Johnny?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to just take a moment to, a special commendation for our county manager, who's worked long and hard on EMS station number seven. I think with this station going into town, we have cut our times down by as much as three, Jeff, three to four minutes, I think we've decided on some of these calls, which was just absolutely a great thing to happen to those folks on that end of town. We've just cut out having to come from Grace Hospital over there, so I think we've done just a tremendous service for the citizens of the county on that side, so we can have that one, one local point for that ambulance to leave over there. I'm just so glad of that. To Oak Hill Fire Departments and Glen Apple Fire Departments for their assistance in the Table Rock Fire. I know the federal folks have been taking care of most of that. And to Mike Long, our Fire Marshal, who has updated us daily with a very descriptive email of what was happening during that time, so kudos to Mike for what he's done for that. Mr. Chairman, today, the county manager and I have visited Sparta Craft Furniture in Conley Springs, and I was just so impressed. That company had gotten down to 17 employees, and now they're back up to 42, if I'm correct, Mr. Manager, 42 employees. I think most people would be familiar with Sparta Craft. They make the triangular boxes that the flags go in for those soldiers that are killed, and they're presented at funerals by funeral homes, and they do a lot of good work. And Sparta Craft has made some strides in the furniture industry itself to put that many people back to work, and they're growing. We've been able to help them get grants. So BDI recognizes those firms on occasions, and Sparta Craft is just a good family business here in Burke County. So I want to recognize Sparta Craft for what they're doing for this county. And then the other things, I think I'll leave that up to the county manager to talk about.
All right. Couple of things, we will not meet again till Thanksgiving, and I'd just like to publicly say to all our citizens, I hope you have a safe and happy Thanksgiving. Me personally, Thanksgiving and Easter are two of my favorite holidays. You get to eat all you want, fellowship all you want, visit all you want, it doesn't cost you a whole lot of money. So it's a good, real good holiday, and I hope you have another one. Johnny touched on one thing I wanted to note on, and it also backs up what Jeff said a little bit about EMS and our firefighters and all those. We need to remember them in our prayers every night, that that situation stays safe. And then again, publicly thank Johnny and Brian for standing in for me today. I had a conflict and couldn't go to Sparta, and it sounds like it was a very good meeting. Wayne?
No comment.
Brian?
Chairman, I want to go over some pictures with you from our recent renovation of the courthouse, to get this information and these pictures out to the public. Courthouse HVAC renovations here, and you're, this picture here showing you the courthouse hallway before the renovation. You see the lights, slow down. You also see the interlocking ceiling, which, the way that ceiling was constructed, you couldn't see what was up there. And as a result of that, you didn't know whether the system was working properly or not. And when they did that, they also, the interlocking ceiling between that and I guess the concrete or the roof decking above served as the return air system. And that will be something to note here in just a moment. Your next picture, please. Do you have that remote? Okay. This is a picture of one of our courtrooms before the changes, and when we did this, apparently you had the little circular lights up there that were in the courtroom, and that didn't apparently prove to be sufficient enough, so they came in with lights like you would see in somebody's outbuilding and put into your courtrooms to illuminate the courtroom. Next picture shows the after, where we went back with a different, more uniformed ceiling as well as more lights. In that before picture, you were getting between an average of 18 to 20 foot candles. With the new lighting arrangement and ceiling, your foot candles, the illumination there went up between 96 and 97 foot candles, so it made a tremendous difference in the lighting in the courtroom. The next picture, this shows you the old electric boiler that was used to heat the entire building. Like I said, you know, you had one behemoth system, and if it failed, the whole courthouse was out. Next, this was the parent, right in here, that was the engineering to establish an opening for return air to come back. There were no duck systems. There were no duck systems. So they just took a hammer and beat a hole through the drywall, up above the ceiling tile. That's been since 1974 until just now. This was a duct that was taped and apparently didn't go to anything. It just dumped out between the ceiling tile and the roof above, so it never got to a room to heat or cool for whoever was working there, or whatever citizens in the courtroom. Your next, and here you see a gaping hole in part of the, I don't know if it was flex pipe that they had used, but again, you're dumping out your supply air into the return air system. So I guess another graphic way of describing what you're seeing there is a dog chasing his tail. Got a whole lot of going around, but ain't nothing getting done. Next picture. And here, you've got one part of this ductwork. Then it looks like to me maybe 12 to 14 inch gap, and ductwork starts back. So you had another hole there. Next. And here, you're looking at a joint where they had taped it, but over the years, with time, that ductwork sagged and that joint failed. So again, you were losing your supply air, and it wasn't getting to its destination. Next picture. This is a picture of some of the new ductwork. You can see the insulation, and inside of that ductwork is also insulation for, make sure the heat or the cool gets to where it's going. And I'll show you another picture here in a moment, a better picture of the square ductwork. Next picture. This, you're looking at underneath some of the ductwork here. This is really substantial work. And you see right here, this is where it comes together, and they seal it in three ways. They use a, almost a putty, then they bring the edges together and they mechanically crimp it, and then they take bolts and seal that joint, so that it's not going to fail in the future. Next picture. Here is, again, some of the square ductwork, and that black is hard to see from this picture, but it's about an inch, inch and a quarter of black foam rubber, and that is also treated with antimicrobial impregnation to prevent mold and mildew in the future down the road, as well as insulating, and also some sound absorption, so that in the courtrooms, when the judge is needing to hear every word, the jury is needing to hear every word, if somebody testifies, and you don't have the HVAC system impeding your ability to hear what's being said in those trials. And you also see that there's straps that join it to the roof decking above, so that hopefully you won't have a failure and that joint sag and pop open. Next picture. This is just a picture of one of the roof units. I can't remember the number total, but each one of these serves a particular room or set of rooms in the courthouse. So if one of these fails, the courthouse is still going to function. And these units are small enough that there's not a problem getting them out of normal production. It shouldn't be more than a three-day period from the time we notify and we need a replacement. Where when you just had that one single system, if it failed, you were out of business, and you can't allow your courthouse, you know your courthouse is one of the three main bodies of a democracy, between the executive, the legislative, and the judicial. And that's part of our democracy, you cannot allow that to fail. So your next picture, please. I want to tell you also about our white goods and recyclable metal storage. We're pouring a pad out at the landfill, and this is one of the pictures we have to show that, the pouring operation. Paul, tell me if I'm getting wrong here, but we get a certain amount of money from the state, from the white goods tax, every time you buy a refrigerator or stove, there's a special tax to help, to pay to dispose of that. And they give monies to counties to help in the process for the disposal of those white goods. Now you can collect up to a certain amount of money, and then they tell you, if you don't have things to spend on, we're not going to give you any more money. So that's how this project is being financed. It's not any funds coming from general fund or even the solid waste fund. This is coming from the white goods tax fund. Next picture. And this is showing you, they've almost got it all poured in these pictures, and it also shows you a little bit of the scenery around, so you may have some idea of where this is going. Talking with Carson, I think the pad has now been completely poured. They're wanting it to cure for a week or two. And then they're going to go around this entire pad, which, from what I understand, is 123 feet by 123 feet. So it's fairly good size. They will establish a security fence around it. It'll be some distance away from the actual concrete pad, so that you've got, you can't just snip the wire and reach in and steal something. In addition to the fencing that'll go around it, there will also be security cameras and lighting to help maintain the security of the pad, and anything that's locked up in there is going to stay there until the staff comes to take it to its appropriate destination. I believe, Carson, this, we anticipate being finished by the end of December, the fencing and the lighting and cameras. Okay? So I wanted to share that with you. Also, we just picked up one of our new ambulances. You know that three ambulances have been authorized for this year. I want to let you know that Greg, I've asked Greg to come and do a presentation of this board in January about the Station 7 and their response times, to let him go into maybe a little more detail about that. And the last thing that I want to touch base with you is, we recently, the chairman and vice chairman and myself, met with the Chair of Catawba County Board of Commissioners and their county manager to discuss Burke Catawba and the future of that facility, and the possibility that we would be looking to terminate our relationship in that facility and the operation, if we move forward with the construction of a new jail here in Burke County. As you know, we've had some incidents here lately where Catawba County had to use all the beds that they were allotted there. And what that did to us is it made us take people that we were housing there and renting beds from Catawba County, and have to take them out to other counties, say Yancey County, not only pay the rental cost, but also the transportation and all that goes with deputies having to transport people to other counties to be held in their jails. So during our discussions, it was very friendly, cordial. They were interested and listened to what we had to say and our discussion, and they too are aware that their jail population seems to be growing, and thus, they didn't have room that they could let them stay in Catawba County. They had to come and utilize the beds that were allotted to them here in Burke County. But one of the things that came out of the discussion was, yes, they were interested in looking at options, and asked that I contact the school of government to see if they have a team that could possibly look at this from an uninterested third party. So we're trying to move forward with that, and I've contacted the school of government, and I'm awaiting a response to that inquiry. But I did want to share that with you. Thank you.
Thank you. JR?
I have no comment or report tonight.
Thank you. Item 200 reports, county manager, Grand Open at Morreton Heights.
Yes, Chairman, I think I've included a copy of the pamphlet that was presented for the opening ceremony, and I wanted to do this through our board meeting in the minutes to permanently house that. So if anybody, some years from now, ever wants to go back and look at it, it's here in our records, and it is a significant event in Burke County, and the potential of keeping some of the folks that are here, shopping here in Burke County, rather than having to go to Catawba County for stores that did not exist here. And maybe we'll even look up and have some people from out of county come to visit our stores here in Burke and assist with some sales tax dollars. Would be beneficial and help to keep people employed here in Burke County.
Thank you. Item 3 is also county manager, and that also deals with the courthouse HVAC project completion.
Well, I've gone over the pictures there, but I will expand a little bit. Part of what all we're doing there in the courthouse is not only upgrading the HVAC system, but also going into the lighting system, the ceilings, and we're moving some folks around to better utilize that facility. But one thing I may not have touched on earlier were that when we were tearing out all these ceilings, we found that there were two blower motors that had been installed for the system in 1974, but no one ever ran electric service to them, so they sat there idle for 37 years. They also found three different breakers. One was a 600 amp, one was 250 amp, and I think one was 175 amp, that for whatever reason were frozen in the own position, so that if somebody was somehow or another being electrocuted, there was no way of shutting those breakers off. And the potential for a fire hazard, I'm not sure how to quantify that, but anytime you have a breaker box, especially when you get into that level, that's frozen or welded from arc welding or some other phenomenon with electricity, that is dangerous. And I am glad that we found that, and that with the monies that were allotted for this project, we were able to correct those, so that it improves the safety of the courthouse, as well as the efficiency. But the other side that I do want to tell you about is, we are moving the estates section of the clerk of court's office over to what had formerly been space used by the registered deeds to better accommodate the clients that they serve. A lot of them come in in wheelchairs, and it was very difficult to get back into that back hall where the clerk's office was, housing the estates office. And we're also trying to bring the district attorney's office from where it is currently located in the old tax building into the courthouse, actually where estates currently are, so that they'll be on the back hall of the courthouse and more readily able to access and get up to the courtrooms. You know, that old tax building, I think, sat idle since somewhere around either 2004, 2006, and we're putting that building into use. I think, I understand that they had spent about $300,000 on the HVAC system before they moved Danny out over to this building. And again, the building has been sitting idle, and you know, we're trying to utilize county assets for the best service that we can provide to the citizens of our county. So I'm very pleased with this, and I certainly appreciate the board's support in allowing this to happen, both financially and from an operational standpoint. So thank you again, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Item 4 in the final report, globally harmonized system training. That'll be presented by Rhonda Lee, Human Resource Director.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. I'm here on behalf of the Safety Committee this evening to share with you some information that we've been, I guess for the past three weeks, sharing with our employees here at Burke County. And what it is, is OSHA has adopted a revised hazard communication standard based on a new global harmonization standard. And that's what you're looking at over here. Next slide, please. And what is the globally harmonized system? Well, what that is, is a worldwide system of hazard communications, which is an attempt to get everybody in the world on the same page, as far as global standards go. Kind of, can you shrink that down? That's okay. But why are we going that way with global harmonization? Pretty much, it's because there's about 650,000 chemicals in the U.S. And all the chemical manufacturers and those folks that make the chemicals all around the world and ship to other countries, they do it in various ways and forms. So this is a way to try to get everybody to do it the same way. Let's see, I think we're on the next slide. One more. There we go. One more. Okay. What will the global harmonization standard do? Well, basically, the system will pretty much take the, what the U.S. is already doing and make it a global standard. The U.S. already trains in chemical use and safety, personal protective equipment, material safety data sheets, and access to first aid equipment and eyewash stations. So it's going to be relatively minor changes for the U.S. The changes, next slide, please. The changes that are coming will be basically the format of MSDS sheets, that's material data safety sheets, and also labels on bulk industrial chemicals. And this, the MSDS that is up there on line one, but on two, the labels are going to have a pictogram, they're going to have signal words like danger or warning, they'll have a hazard statement and precautionary statements as well. Next slide. The MSDS sheets will no longer be named MSDS sheets, those are going to be called safety data sheets. And this provides a comprehensive information for use in workplace chemical management. Next slide, please. Each of the material data safety sheets, what I'm used to calling those, that, which will now be SDS sheets, will have 16 headings. The headings will be chemical identification, hazard identification, which will also have precautionary measures. It'll have the composition of the chemical, which would be the substance or mixture. It'll have first aid measures, firefighting measures, accidental release measures, which includes personal precautions and environmental protection as well. It will have handling and storage, that's the safe handling of those products. It'll have exposure control, personal protection, which that is to control the parameters and PPE for the employees. Number nine, it will have the physical and chemical properties, which would be the appearance, odor, flashpoints, things like that. It will have stability and reactivity, that's the possibility of hazardous reactions. The toxicological information, which are health effects. It'll have the ecological information, which is environmental effects. It'll have the disposal consideration on how to get rid of these chemicals, transfer, transport information, regulatory information, and other information. So every SDS sheet from manufacturers will be in this format from around the world now. Next slide, please. This is a sample of what the new labeling will look like. And these labels will come on drums and bulk chemicals, industrial chemicals. And they will have six areas on each label. One will be the product identifier, the signal word, like we were talking earlier, danger. It'll have the hazard statement, precautionary statements, the supplier identification, and the pictograms. So the new labels will look like this going forward. Next picture, please. There are nine hazard pictograms that will be on these type labels. The first one is health hazard. The second one is if the chemical is flammable. The exclamation mark is letting people know that that's an irritant. That could be a skin, eye, or respiratory irritant. The other one is the gas cylinder, which means that's gas under pressure. The next one is corrosion. That means if you get it on your hands or in your eyes or on metal, it's corrosive. The next one is an exploding bomb, so that means that is an explosive. The next one, if you can see that, is the flame over the circle, which is an oxidizer that shows any gas which may, if, with, can't read my notes here, it's basically, if it's exposed to oxygen, that could cause a fire. So that's what that one is. The next one is environment, which, if the product is in the waters or streams, could be toxic to the aquatic life. And the last one is one that we're all pretty familiar with, is the skull and crossbones, which is an acute toxicity. So these are the type pictures that you're going to start seeing on labels that are coming in on products in the workplace. And all employers are supposed to be doing this by December 1st with all of their employees. So I hope that other employers are doing this as well. The signal words on the labels will be danger for severe hazards, warning for less severe hazards, and caution for the least severe of hazards. Each of those labels, again, will have a hazard statement, and examples of those are like harmful if swallowed, highly flammable liquid and vapor, harmful to aquatic life. The precautionary statements basically let people know to not eat or drink while using those type products, and those type things. Do not spray on open flames and such as that. And pretty much, OSHA is requiring that employers train all their workers on this new labeling and new SDS format by December 1st. So we've brought this to you guys as well, so you have now been trained on the new labeling and SDS. Kay had said that would be a good way to do this, so. And we have almost got all of our employees trained so far. We have two more sessions tomorrow and Thursday, and that will probably wrap up the over 600 employees that we have to train at Burke County. Do you guys have any questions on any of this? So far? any of this so far? No. The other thing that we're letting our employees know is that if they have bottles that aren't labeled, that it's really important to have those labeled in the workplace. So that's some of the things that we're taking out as well. Like if they have water, just spray plants and that kind of thing. Any questions?
Any questions, any comments?
It's just a new glorified MSDS sheet.
That's exactly what it is.
In English?
In English. And it's an SDS sheet. I'm going to have a hard time getting used to that, but it's an SDS sheet now going forward.
If it's going to be globalized, that was going to be quite, it will be probably standardized in English, probably?
Yes. From my understanding, it will be. And the picture grams are supposed to help people understand because they're universal. So that's what those are for.
Thank you, Rhonda. Any other, any question or comment? One one time. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. We have a motion with that training.
Pardon?
There's a motion.
There's a motion with it. Mr. Chairman, I move to acknowledge the provision of training on the globally harmonized system.
All right. All those in favor, if no other question. Would you raise your right hand? Madam Clerk?
Thank you.
Okay. Next on the agenda, vacancy announcements. And Madam Clerk will handle that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We have quite a few opportunities for citizens to serve. Hickory Regional Planning Commission, one vacancy. Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee, eight vacancies. Nursing Home Community Advisory Committee, two vacancies. Council on Aging, one vacancy. Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, one vacancy. Board of Equalization Review, there are seats for five regular members and two alternates. Region E Development Corporation, two vacancies. The Planning Board has one vacancy. The Morganton Board of Adjustment for the ETJ, one vacancy. The Board of Health has one vacancy for a veterinarian. The term is for three years. However, applications are also being solicited for the following seats for terms ending December 31st, 2013, a physician, ophthalmologist, engineer, and a citizen at large. Folks can contact Rebecca MacLeod, the Health Director, or myself for more information. There are three vacancies exist on the Library Board of Trustees, one for a City of Morganton resident, a Valdez city resident, and a county resident excluding the areas of Morganton, Valdez, or Hildebrand. Applications are also being solicited for the following seats with terms ending December 31st, a City of Morganton resident, and at-large resident, a county resident excluding the areas of Morganton, Valdez, or Hildebrand. Folks can contact Jim Wilson at the library or myself for more information on those opportunities. The Tourism Development Authority, we are soliciting applications for the following seats with terms ending December 31st. There are two seats for collectors of occupancy taxes. There are three seats for folks that promote travel and tourism, a Valdez representative, and a Morganton representative. You may contact Ed Phillips or myself for more information about those opportunities. Partners Behavioral Health Management, one vacancy exists for the Consumer Family Advisory Committee, family member of a consumer representing mental health. The term is for three years. Folks can contact Rep. Melton, the director, or myself for more information. And that concludes my report. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I believe it would be safe to say, if you want to get involved and see how government works, we have plenty of vacancies.
I would agree.
Sign right up, right? Thank you. We do have a need for closed session for Personnel Matters as authorized by NCGS 143-318.11, A3, 4, and 6. We'll take about a five-minute break and reconvene after we go into closed session.
We have a motion.
Motion to go into closed session.
Thank you. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion to adjourn regular session. All those in favor, raise your right hand.